Perfect. Yeah.
I'm gonna call this meeting of the Arundel Planning Board to a halt. Today is Oct- uh, August fifth, two thousand twenty-five. Let's start with a roll call from the far end.
James Lowery.
Paul Green.
Susan Roth.
Rich Gannon. And we have on the agenda tonight. A couple of items. We have approval of the agenda, approval of the minutes of July fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. We have public comment. We have two items of new business. Item number one is Kate's Homemade Butter, a conditional use pre-application. And item number two is Total Care ABA, a conditional use application. Under other business, we will continue to discuss the performance standards. Uh, for an industri- a business industrial park. And then we'll stop and we'll go home.
Move to approve.
Motion by Marty, seconded by Paul Green to approve as presented. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It is unanimous. Approval of the minutes of July fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five.
So moved?
Second. Mo- motion by Susan Roth, seconded by Jamie Lowery to approve the minutes as presented. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. Uh, seeing that there's nobody from the public here. I'm assuming you're here for Kate. Since there's nobody from the public, we're gonna skip right over that section. And we'll go into new business, Kate's Homemade Butter. Uh, conditional use pre-application, a proposal for an addition of a ninety-six hundred square foot, one hundred and twenty by eighty-foot cold storage space. Property is located at twenty-four Darrylene on Tax Map Five, Lot Nine A in the R four zone. The owner is Arundel Valley LLC and the applicant is Dan Patrick.
Rich, before we get going, I need to, um. I've told, disclosed to you previously, but maybe not to the rest of the board, but, um. Company that I work for, BH two M, um, Kate's Butter is a client.
Okay.
Of ours. I was not involved in the sketch plan that was prepared and submitted with the application. And where this is a pre-application meeting, I don't know if I need to necessarily recuse myself. But I wanted to make people aware of my affiliation with BH two M now. And thereby Kate's Butter. And I, I guess I would think if we get to a point and a. A, any form of vote or not necessarily decision of rule, but any kind of action would take place. Um, if you guys don't want me to recuse myself, I'm going to abstain.
Okay. That will work.
Yeah.
No objections. You're not, you're not making a bunch of money off them, are you?
I haven't, I'd. Until this morning, I did not know what was involved.
And until five minutes ago, I had no idea who you were.
Okay, so we've, we're, we're going to have a couple of things that we have to look at. Uh, the first of which is a sidewalk. It's, it's a pre-application. Yeah, I'm just letting the applicant know. We will end up having to do a sidewalk out there. Can, what can you tell us about?
Sure. So, uh, my father and I, I'm Chris Bager, by the way, not Dan, Dan, my dad. Um, we came down and met with, is it Miss? Peaks, Pikes?
Samantha, Sam.
So we came and met with her and then maybe a month ago, a month and a half ago. To discuss this project. Um. So we could get some more input. On what was gonna be specifically required that was outside of the application. You know, and we had a few questions for her. And her recommendation was instead of kind of dropping this as a completed application. On the board to schedule this pre-application meeting. Um. I didn't receive, and I'm not sure if you guys had a chance to look at it, uh, that Mr. Tettelman. Uh, who is. Filling in for Sam.
Yep.
He sent us, or I received, we received this from Andy Fleet yesterday.
And we have it too.
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, which. In reality, answers a lot. Of the questions and what's expected from us to present to you folks. Uh, for the application itself. Um, but in general, uh, what we're, we would like to do or looking to do. Is add a. Eighty by hundred and twenty-foot building. Behind our existing building for the sole purpose of cold storage. To store our product. Um. There's no increase, and I was looking through, there's no increased traffic from it, uh. Really no great impact. We realize our site plan will need to be. Officially revised. We're gonna have to go, uh, to the DEP again for our storm water. Um, our water services. We run off a well. Our existing wastewater is our own, uh, septic. Basically a mega septic system. Um, there's gonna be no really impact to that because it's, it's a cooler. There's no additional services in it. Um. It's basically a big. But insulated box is what it's gonna be. As far as the design and the aesthetics of it. We're not a hundred percent sure yet, um, how it's gonna look. It's definitely gonna fit with what we have now. And. You know, like I said, I was reading through this, there's no impact, uh. Outside of the boundaries, there will be no emissions from it. Basically, it's its own sealed. Little island. And again, what Mr. Tettelman had sent us answers probably ninety-nine percent of the questions I had. In order. Go back to BH two M, which we've worked on. We have worked with them. And I never miss a can, I miss a cane when I was in here originally. For this project, so they have a complete history of it also, so I don't. I don't anticipate any delay there. Or.
Well, they. There, there are a couple of questions about the original permit back in two thousand and eleven. When, when we authorized Kate's Butter, there, there was an educational component that was attached to it. I was asking the codes enforcement officer. If he had received any of the reports and he says, no, he's not getting them. So I don't know if they're, if they're being turned in or where they're ending up. So if you guys could just confirm that they're actually being sent. Because if they're not being sent, it's a violation of your permit.
Okay. I will have to check with, actually my younger brother, he was kinda, I'm just the engineer of the family.
I'm trying to think, your younger brother, he's the fella that lives up in the house with.
Lucas lives on the hill with the fun.
With the, with the shop underneath it? That, is he still manufacturing?
I think he still has kept his permit.
I wa- I would, I wouldn't give that up for anything.
But I don't think. Honestly, he's doing anything.
Yeah.
With it, we just don't have the time. I mean, he's now, it's, when he started that, he had, I don't get any kids. Now he's got four.
Yeah.
And, and they range from, I think. The newest one is six months, the. Seven? Six, seven?
Yes.
He's got his hands full there. I know he has maintained his permit, but as far as him. Doing anything with firearms.
Oh, well, I, I know when he opened it up, it created a kerfuffle. It was, it was a lot of fun to watch.
It wasn't fun for me.
But I was on the outside watching.
Yeah, no, I'm sure, you know, I, I, I'm not forgetting walking to the front door of Kate's and. Good, because we keep the doors locked. Nobody, you cannot get in that hill.
Yeah.
You know, because that's where we're wired that way.
Yeah.
The guy flashes of something and I'm like, that, that means nothing to me. I, I don't know who you are. Some of the ATF, I'm like, do you have no business being here?
What, did he come into the, the facility?
He was coming to the facility looking for my brother, like. Like, you're gonna have to wait here because I have no idea what you're talking about and I'm not allowing you to come inside. I don't know you. You're not our FDA inspector. You're not our USDA inspector. So. I went over looking like, what in the world's going on? He goes, wow, and that's when I found out. I'm like, what are you doing?
I thought it was great.
No, I think it's great. I mean, personally, I have my own hobby outside of work. That is hobby outside of work. But the problem is, is work has encompassed us all at this point.
Yeah.
Um, I was just gonna say on the second page of the memo. Um. Item five point seven for fire protection. You should probably get a letter since it's problematic whether or not this building. Needs any kind of sprinkling, even though generally architectural, uh, agricultural buildings don't need it.
Sure.
Might fall out of that purview, so. Uh, I would get a letter or check with them.
Right.
Yeah, check with the fire chief and.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and we went through, we just, well, not just, um. Again, as a recommendation of you guys and who's at Andrews, the fire chief, is he still?
Yeah.
You know, we went through and had a full-blown firearm system put in and. I'm assuming that system will. We will add it to this building as well.
Extend it out to the.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's crazy. You know, we look back now and it's like, why don't we do this to begin with?
Right.
Yeah, because if it's full of butter, it's gonna be a lot of melted butter out on the driveway.
What's that?
I said, if it's full of butter and it melts, it's gonna make a mess on your driveway.
Yeah, right? Then we're out of business, but. But no, it, it's. I, I'm assuming, I, I don't know what the, the requirements will be for that. I'm assuming that will come from the activity of the architect, structural engineer.
Right, so if he connects with the fire chief.
Correct.
You'll get it.
Sure.
Nailed down.
Chief should be. The chief's really good about helping out.
Yeah. Agreed.
No, they've been great.
Yeah.
For sure.
He's a good guy, gets it done.
In the ideal condition, when would be? Your dream to have this all done by?
Two months ago. No. Um. I would imagine at this point.
Have it closed in before the, the first of the year?
I highly doubt it.
No, I said that would be the ideal.
I, I, ideal would be that. I just don't know if we can physically work that fast.
Yeah.
To.
Or find out.
And ultimately, if this has to go back through an amended DEP process, that will blow out any schedule that you think is worth, you know.
Which I'm not, I don't know if it will because it's not really gonna impact the impervious area.
Okay.
As much because it, where this building is going, it's really. Right now, it's asphalt.
It's on an existing asphalt.
It's on, it will be on an existing asphalt and we'll, we'll. I'm assuming have to extend the parking lot on that end of the buildings. Some, but it's not gonna be the hundred feet. So the.
That'll simplify that name a lot.
I think so, which is good. Um. I mean, as far as permitting impact, I don't think it's gonna be that big of a. Change. It, it's, I'm assuming it will have to be amended. What that amendment process is gonna entail, I'm not sure. That's for. BH two M.
Are you, are you gonna have to hire people to work in the cold storage?
No.
Okay. I, because I was thinking, I was looking at, at about, uh. Parking spaces. But if you're not gonna have any.
That kinda, that, that was a question I had. Do we need? Is that a requirement to add those parking?
Looking at, at this note, I would have to say that yes, it does.
Which is no big deal. I mean, we, we've got plenty of. Space.
Well, they're, they're saying it's one space for every five hundred square feet.
Either have to add it or you have to. Request a waiver with justification why you don't need it. Right?
Uh huh.
Uh huh.
So it'd be one of the two.
Not one to five hundred just for warehouse space?
Yeah. I was kinda surprised at that number.
People, people working in the warehouse, right?
Roughly, I would probably apply for a waiver because we have no intentions of. Especially given the current situation to try to add people. Being able to find people that wanna work or to help has been. Nearly impossible.
Uh huh.
But it, yeah, it, it like, you know, like I said, as far as traffic, it's not gonna impact. We're not, it's, there's no more trucks coming in or out. There's no more workers coming in and out. It's just. We need the space. For the product. Because storing it on a trailer truck backed into the dock door just isn't. Realistic or efficient.
So should we schedule a sidewalk?
No, we have to wait until we get the app, uh, the, the permits, the application itself.
So now the ball's in your court.
Yeah.
But I, you know, like I, so. I received this. Yesterday evening and it answered ninety-nine percent of. The questions I had and what was gonna be expected. Of us. But, you know, I, I think in the, it also gives you folks an opportunity to ask me.
Yep.
Or us. If there's other expectations that you have that either I can answer or I can get an answer for. And Mr. Gannon brought up the, the educational part. Speak to my young, young brother on the hill about that.
Yeah, they, I mean, the, it may have been done. I know it was.
I know, I know they've been doing, um, farm course. See, I mean, he has a full fledged working farm up there. The. As far as the manufacturing facility itself, I'm not sure. We. We were a victim of the whole COVID thing.
Yeah.
When. Basically.
Shut everything down.
They, they, they shut everything down and it's to the point, I mean, it crippled us. I mean, because. Normally we have, you know, people that helped us with the building, you know, the electricians, the plumbers. Welders. Tex, really, you know. We, they would come in or we would allow them like on a weekend to come in. And I don't wanna say unintended access, but we would give them access to the building. And. Sadly, when COVID hit, I, I even believe the NTSB was involved with food safety. And. Basically, shut everything down. You know, everything we do is a report now. Uh. But. With the exception of our inspectors who are in. I mean, we're inspected, I believe, twice a month. Actually, three times a month, the main milk commission, USDA and FDA. But they. Put a really. Stranglehold on us with that. Um, so as far as tours of the plan, I'm not sure of the status. Like I said, that's more of my brother's. Thing and I, and I will get with him.
Well, I would.
And get an answer.
I wouldn't be overly concerned about COVID and the shutdown. I don't think you'd be doing educa- any education since they closed all the schools. You know, I, I'm more.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm looking at it more from the point, okay, COVID's gone by, this is what you're supposed to be doing. And then when I asked the codes enforcement officer, he said, no, we don't have any.
Who is code enforcement?
Ryan. I don't know what his last name is.
I don't either.
The codes office. Ryan something.
And I can't look it up more than.
Yep, I, I don't know what it's, he's listed on the website.
Is it?
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, you know, again, because I know. My younger brother originally drafted. And I believe it was sent to the town, a proposal of. Like kind of a syllabus of the educational component of it.
We, we did get that way back.
You did, okay. And let me get with him because that's more. His. Court than mine.
Yep, there was. We, I believe we had a couple of reports that came in from back early, early on and. I, I quit looking at them. I said, okay, fine. You know, I don't need to see them. That's more for, for the codes officer anyway.
Okay.
But if we're gonna expand out, we should make sure that everything is up, up to snout.
No, no, I agree. We don't. The last thing I, I want. What's that?
Ryan Lawler is the code.
Ryan Lawler, okay. Yeah, I mean, the, the last thing we want is. You. Or anyone.
And.
Coming to our door with a complaint. I mean, I think we've done pretty well. I don't know if there's any complaints against us, but you know, it's, it's.
You, you had mentioned that you're doing farm tours.
I know Allison, who's Luke's wife.
Yeah.
She basically. The farmer's not hers, but. She manages the cows. The milking and all that. I know, I know in the past she's done tours. That was her and. While Luke was down with us, but. As far as the reports, I, I don't know. I will have to ask.
Okay.
I'll ask Luke and Allison. I'll see them tomorrow.
I'm not, I'm not sure what the format of the report was. I. It may have just been something as simple as saying, here's the calendar and we did this and this on these days. And these are the people. Th- this is the group of kids that we had come in.
But he's fairly new. So I don't know where Jim might have left. There might be things that he hasn't come across yet. So they may be there, but we just don't.
How long has Jim been gone?
Uh, since December.
Yeah.
Okay, so not that one.
So, and the code enforcement officer is CEO at ArundelMaine.com.
So that hasn't changed then?
Yeah, so just send him an email.
I will.
Yeah.
Student chair.
Yeah, Marty.
Landscaping, that question in the front.
We could take a look at it when we go out.
Well, I just didn't know.
Well, Marty had, Marty was wondering if the landscaping from the original plan was ever done.
I believe it.
I don't know. I'm asking.
I believe it was because I, I know. That was more. That was in Tad's.
Yeah.
Ballpark back then.
We won't go there.
And Tad was a stickler about landscape.
Tad with his arborvitae.
What's that?
Tad and his arborvitae's.
It, I, we have some. We have our buddies that walks.
Yeah.
Where our, our receiving docks are.
This is out front. What I'm talking about.
The, uh. The, 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 the pond at the end for, for the fire department, that, that hookup is still working well?
Yep.
Cool.
No.
I can't, I can't imagine trying to push all that water uphill up.
It's not that, I'm, well, it's such a big pipe.
Yeah.
You know, there's, there's not much head loss in it. But. Yeah, as far as I know, they come out, I, I know it's. I almost wanna say in the fall they come out. And anything that's in that line, they pump it out. And you know, if anything's gotten into it, they pump it out, so it, it won't freeze, but. I haven't heard any, and I believe it's been used a couple of times for fires on. Route one eleven.
Oh, cool.
Whether it's from the town or other towns have come down to. Not sure the fish have liked it, but. They're secondary. But no, it's, everything's worked extremely well. We've had really. Zero issues. Our only issue's been with central main power. And that's just reliable power. But.
Do you have any questions the board can answer?
I don't, you know, I, I believe. This really answered the vast majority of the questions I had. So when I got with. BH two M or, uh, with Andy. That. You know, we could. Do this as efficiently as possible.
Yeah, one, once we, once you get the application submitted. Uh, we'll schedule the sidewalk.
Like I said, it seems kind of vague now. I don't have any architectural drawings. I don't, I mean, you know, I haven't. Yeah, gotten that far into it. We're, we're kind of into the. Trying to get realistic pricing back to build it. Keyword realistic.
Uh, and, and, no, no. Pre-tariff is no longer realistic.
Yeah, so wait, I'm not gonna go there.
Yeah, don't.
But I'm not political.
Okay. Does, does the board have any questions?
Good luck, good luck. We look forward to seeing you.
And I, I'll get with Luke and figure out an answer to that question.
Okay.
All right, thank you so much.
Guys, your questions, obviously, you know, you can get a hold of Sam, right? He should be back.
Sam won't be back for. Probably another two or three weeks, if not more.
Okay, yeah, if not, then there's somebody.
We, yeah, there is.
They should be able to get back.
Yeah, it's, um. Charles.
Tettelman.
Yeah.
Yeah. He's, he's the one that's gonna be writing the reports for us until Sam gets back.
For a while, okay.
Yeah.
All right, no, thank you so much. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Nice meeting you.
I'm just hoping Sam gets back.
Me too. Someone. You're up.
Next, next up.
Good evening. I'm Patrick Donahue from Commercial Build Out, represent Total Care ABA. Um, they are.
Speak up a little louder so we can hear you.
A little closer, is that better for you? So I'm Patrick Donahue from Commercial Build Out. We represent, uh, Total Care ABA. They are a national daycare facility. Quasi daycare facility for children with, uh. Motor skill issues and autism and situations like that. Uh, the state of Maine is getting out of that type of business or not really up to speed with the amount of clientele that is needed right now. They. They requested, uh, that they move into this area and start. Providing this. Pretty vital service that we're way understaffed for, like most businesses are way understaffed for. And, uh, we're looking at a property, we've already leased a property at twenty-six, twenty-five Portland Road. Used to be Champagne Energy's, uh, headquarters. And we're looking to open a daycare at that facility. It's, I wouldn't really call it a daycare. It's classified as that, but it's more of a treatment, uh. The level of education for the, the staff needs to be much higher than a daycare facility. Uh, it's more of a, a hands-on treatment facility for children with, uh. The types of behavioral issues. Motor skill issue. I'll let Tahila from Total Care kind of speak to what they. And I'll speak more to the site plan and things that we're doing. Awesome. Uh. We're actually doing nothing to the site plan whatsoever. We meet the parking requirements based on the ordinance. Uh, nothing is changing on the outside whatsoever, other than that we're just putting a little bit of, uh, equipment in the backyard for kids to be able to get some fresh air. It won't be a full-fledged playground because the children, uh, need a lot more supervision and they're there more for therapy than they are for, uh, a daycare facility. So if there's any questions that we have as far as.
I have invited, it, it, this may sound like a dumb question. I apologize. I haven't been by there in a while. Uh, is the backyard fenced in right now?
It is, right. Uh, it's on three sides, uh, two sides. We're gonna add, in the fence, the closed end. It's about twenty feet of fence. The closed end. It wasn't the original site plan, uh, that I saw that it was there, but it doesn't look like it ever got solved.
Well, what is it? Just a regular cyclone?
It's a, uh, like a six-foot, uh, vinyl fence. Actually.
Okay, sure.
Now, how many, uh. Prior daycares? Or? There's been at least one or two been in that building?
There wasn't the original property that there was a daycare there.
Yeah.
That got torn down and the current building has never been a daycare. That was a new construction that Champagne Energy built.
I know traffic was a big issue.
My answer was.
And that, that's what I wanna address more is, uh. Because of the children's needs, they don't have forty kids flooding all in at the same time. What happens is the kids kind of stagger in over a ten-minute, fifteen-minute increment. At ten at a time, five at a time. They're met at the door by the staff and brought into the building. So it's a lot more hands-on. There's not. Like you'd see at a normal school, you'd see everybody just dropping kids off, kids running everywhere. It's, uh, the kids have gotta be brought into the building by staff. So, and it's staggered because staff can only handle so many children at a certain time. Um, not all the children are staying there all day. They're there for shorter periods of time, most of them that are just getting, uh, some treatment.
So is the drop-off area in the parking lot in the front of the building?
Correct.
And so will there be a designated drop-off? Area or will they enter through one of the parking spaces?
We want to have them enter in through the Portland Road section. And then exit out through the old Port Road, Post Road section. Uh, just because. Me going there on a daily basis, uh, us just going and painting and everything, we noticed that that's the easiest way to get in and out and. We're gonna instruct all the parents to bring them in that way and bring, bring them out on Post Road.
And from the parking lot going to Old Post Road. You're gonna be able to make a left or a right.
Correct. We didn't change anything in the parking lot, but we're gonna instruct the parents that, that the best course of action is to come in through, uh, Portland Road and exit out onto Post Road. Uh, Portland Road and exit out onto Post Road. Um, most of the children come from all over Southern Maine, so it's uh, it's not like it's just local traffic that's coming in and out. So. They they usually tend to fill those or. Go by those instructions pretty well if you set them up that way.
So. So is there, do you have plans to either put up signs like entrance only, exit only?
We don't at the moment. It was just something that was going to be in our handbook. Uh, to the staff to to let them know that's kind of how we want traffic to flow. Uh, like most developments, we do a lot of different developments. Our companies is hard to get. You only get twenty-five percent of the people that listen to you the first time, and then after a while. It's I built a Starbucks in Bitterford and I'm still struggling trying to get people not take left-hand turns and. And we've been ten years there. So, uh, we have, we actually at one point, we had up to thirty-five directional signs on that property and they, we had to scale it down because we were system overload for people. So we found the best course of action is to kind of. Instruct them and then just keep reminding them if they start not following that because signage, people don't pay attention to too much.
So I think that entrance exit um scenario off of Route one is problematic. To have to cross Route one to go um left out of that parking space if you're gonna give. Um. You know, parents the ability to enter and exit through that driveway. So it's probably. I think wise to consider a right turn only if they're exiting out of that space.
I would.
I'm just saying, Angie, I thought you said you were only entering that side and exiting.
Well, that's what we're gonna instruct them to do, but um, one thing that working with DOT over the last twenty years is. They've really learned and you probably could speak to this more, James, is that right turn out onlys uh actually cause more traffic. Problems than they don't because a lot of people don't pay attention to it or they break the rule. And they've really got away from that quite a bit. Uh. There's, I've done a lot of Starbucks in the state and that's one thing that they've really got away from is those right turns out because they have realized that uh. Ten, twenty-five percent of those people still break those rules and they find that that causing more accidents than limiting.
The bottom line is they're gonna suggest that parents. Don't exit from that place, but they're not gonna.
Those white things work really good.
Yeah.
And they drive back over.
Yeah.
Oh, no, I I prefer the little, the little mound that's in the, in the middle of the road like you have in at the benefit star. I've seen people try to drive across that.
Oh, yeah.
They want to go left.
We had that in Bitterford. We had the, we put the island extended if people drove over it. And I actually found that uh, one day the fire truck drove over it to pull in the guys and get. So, we uh. It's not limited to just the public. Everybody seems to be doing that. Um, somebody famously said sometimes you just can't control the lowest common denominator of the public and people are just in a rush. We talked about this prior to the meeting. People are just always in a rush to go nowhere and it happens quite often. It is my uh, in dealing with Randy Illian quite a bit with that does a lot of the DOT, he runs Southern Maine for the most part. Is they're getting away from those right turnouts because they do find that it is causing more accidents than saving. Uh, accidents. Which I could see because people still, um, but again, as the tenant, as the property owner, uh, we have a lot of control over how people operate our properties. And uh, will be definitely, the suggestion will be something that will be pushed pretty hard and we tend to follow it when it's coming directly from the staff.
So um, I have another question about drop-off.
Sure.
So you're expecting a parent dropping off a child to pull into a parking space? Get out. And meet whoever it is, the teacher, the aide. At the entrance?
No, uh, what they do is they pull in and a staff member meets the child at the car and then brings them in.
At the car, so their car pulls into a parking space.
Right.
So there's no drop-off island or anything like that?
And there's no room to have anything like that on that property.
So they will be. When a vehicle enters, they will be coming in and pulling into a space.
Correct.
So you don't have that big risk of a backup or queue happening because they can come in. Park.
They park, it's a, it's about a four-minute process total. So, and it's staggered. Uh, we try to stagger them. Every ten to fifteen minutes so that there's gonna be four or five arriving at a time. And our license requirements are we're, we're going for a license for each other because that is what they will be serving, but there won't ever probably be forty children in that building at one time. It's uh, because staff can't handle that type of load. It's just, you have to have that license to be able to uh service that many clients. So basically the front parking spots that are against the building, those are going to be the drop-off parking spots. The ones that are to the left are going to be where staff parks. And uh. It's basically it. Uh, I, I think. With the traffic, I understand your concern because I have come in and out of there quite a bit and I've owned some properties that were pretty uh tricky to overcome speed, especially there. It's a lot of speed there. In that area because they come over that bridge and they go both directions. I think you're gonna find that most people are gonna utilize that post road. Because it is friendly to use and I think it's uh easy and people usually see that and people take the path of least resistance. I know just me on habit pulling it out of there, that's what I do and it wasn't because anybody told me to do it, just I saw it, thought it was the best way to kind of navigate the property.
So let me just ask you another question. How many staff members are you anticipating having at one? You know, during your session?
They're going off, aren't they?
Why? Because you don't have that many parking spaces.
Here.
Yeah, for for parents and staff. So. What is going to be the number of professional people working in the building? As opposed to. Parents possibly. You know, coming in and dropping off as well as.
In speaking with the CFO and the CEO of the company, uh, they. Plan on maximizing how, once they get to their full of possibly four to five. As the tops. Um, and that does meet the, we have ten parking spots which were three over what the requirements are for the ordinance. So we feel we have plenty of parking. Um. Four to five would be probably the max that would ever be there again. Uh, children's licenses for forty and five people would probably cover that, but there's never gonna be forty there at one time. It's staggered for others.
But you're gonna, you're, are are you saying that you, that you're going to have forty clients over the course of the day? Or will you be having eighty clients and forty of my might be there at one point?
But somehow five staff members, which takes up half their parking lot.
It does, it does.
Right.
So that doesn't leave much.
It doesn't, uh, but it's pretty common to what our facilities are across the country and they manage pretty well with that type of parking situation. Um, Maine is uh. We've, we've grown here that uh, we like wide lanes and we like lots of parking, but it's not uh, normal in New Jersey or New York to have those type of things. So. This is actually a spacious uh parking situation compared to most of our facilities across the country, so.
I'm more, I'm more concerned about, not, not so much about the, the, the parking space as I am the impact of traffic. Route one's nuts.
It is.
And, and I'm just, I'm, that's why I'm, I'm just trying to figure out how many people during the course of a day on a normal day. Will you have dropping off children and picking children up?
The maximum would be forty drop-offs.
For the whole day?
Correct.
Stagger.
Okay.
It's not easy to find the staff to service these clients. We're currently in home, like throughout the state, but I would say primarily Southern Maine. So right now there's two like clinicians, like higher level clinicians that are set to work in the center. Um, but as we get clients that are interested in the services and I'll have to find them therapists and. Those therapists will, depending on the client's schedule, could service like one to two to three. Kids if it's like, you know, separate hours, but I would say like our biggest. Struggle would be like finding the staff. So like. I don't know that there would be like a bunch of therapists at the same time at the clinic. It would more so be like if we have like five lower-level clinicians working with the kids, then like. That's how we would come up with a schedule. If that helps.
We're giving you the worst-case scenario. I, I I've always learned coming in front of planning boards, I don't want to come in and tell you that we're never gonna get to that. I'd rather give you the worst-case scenario than have you uh calling us saying, uh, you told us there was gonna be ten kids here and there's twenty. Um, this is the worst-case scenario that there will be forty drop-offs. We don't see that. It's not how most of them run, but uh, that is what we'd be licensed for.
But forty drop-offs that are staggered or.
Staggered.
Or come in small flocks.
They could be small.
Four or five kids at a time?
Correct.
So that would be one of your small groups. Um.
And how many staff does it take for a drop-off? One on, one-on-one or that taking some, maybe take two staff to one?
It's usually one-on-one.
It's usually one-on-one.
I just.
It would be somebody going out. It's that we try to stagger it a fifteen-minute increment so that one person can go out, bring one in, bring one in, bring one in. So it's one after another and then everybody's gone and then ten or fifteen minutes later, we're hoping that.
So you give parents drop-off times?
Yes, they do. Yeah, they have appointments.
They have appointments, so in order for you know what time they're coming.
That along with the client's schedule, because every client has like an individualized schedule.
You got weather, Joe.
I'm sorry, Marty?
Weather.
Yeah.
So we can always think of it more as a. You know, a, a doctor's office.
Look at it more like a physical therapist office.
They call it in Maine, a specialized preschool.
Hmm.
That's what they call it in Maine. Um, the therapy that's. Conducted is uh ABA therapy. It's applied behavioral analysis. It's for children diagnosed with autism. So we work directly with CDS. And they provide us the clients.
So again, it, it's classified really in Maine as a daycare under licensing, but it really isn't. And that's why I was trying to say we have a hybrid here. It's a. I would put it more in a medical type of uh, like going to a physical therapist, not a heavy medical use, but uh, maybe a counselor's office or that was a little bit big, more on the busy side, but. Um, you're not gonna have, it's not a school by any stretch where you're gonna have this. School buses and all these people coming and going and not anything like that. It's really, I would really think of it like soccer-based physical therapy. They might have forty customers over the day and you'll see a lot of coming and going and uh. It's uh, be stacked.
Great. What's the uh? What's the average time that you have a group, like you have a group of four at a time, you said roughly? Four to five, how long is each group stay?
Child's average.
It's like a block.
Unless you drop them off and go on your way to work and pick them up on your way home.
Right. The clinics open from eight to five and then. Um, depending on the amount of hours, they'll be approved. Through insurance for services. We'll divide that Monday to Friday, but. There's like, I know also the clinical director like will set like block time, so like. And that helps like determine like the amounts of kids per each block.
Yep. So I have another question.
Average of hour, you need to well, and I know it can be different, but.
Yeah.
As, as a joke.
Coming to mind, I think like two to three hours.
So you have groups coming and going.
Correct.
So they're like, it's, it's an exchange. So you release one group and another group, so they're gonna cross.
There's, we try to stagger so that they're coming ten to fifteen minutes apart. There's a little window there because there's. Uh, the clinicians need to get prepped before the children get there because everybody has their own uh program. To work through, so it's not like you slip a book, an educational book where you have the eighth grade math and then the next group comes in, does it? Everybody has their specific. Uh, treatments and their specific schedule. So it's very individualized.
I, I ask because I know this space.
Yeah.
And it's tight. So, you know, you have a, have to do a lot of things in this place.
In the moving thing, you're saying it's tight?
No. That is, I think. On its face, for me, is one of the most problematic parts of your proposal.
Agree with you, but in. In Maine, we always have that problem with traffic, but. It's not a real traffic situation in places that are a lot more populous for us. It really works pretty smooth. So it's, it's definitely not. I know, and I, I grew, grew up and born and raised, fifth generation Maine. I know. How we think here, we think a little bit differently, but traffic flow is, goes pretty smooth and we have. Parking situations with a lot more children and a lot tighter than this across the country and. They work pretty smooth as long as you're good operators and you do things right. Uh, there's a lot more control over this type of business than there is just a. Uh, even a physical therapist office or something. It's, everything is about scheduling and and keeping the kids on schedule.
So do we need a traffic study?
Well, that's, that's why I was trying to figure out how many, because at, at eighty. Uh, at forty. Students, you're looking at. Eighty trips a day. And I'm not sure what the threshold would be because we, I, dealing with Route one.
I believe it's.
The current property now?
It's a controlling sales and office.
Have to go to the DOT for an entrance permit. Just to change.
Yeah, that they took it away because at one time it was two. Now I think it's only one now.
Well, they, they could have altered. Typically, if you've got a entrance or, you know, driveway. Off of a state road, you've got, even if it's a change of use, keeping the driveway the same, change of use, you have to go back to DOT for that approval.
And I believe based on my conversations that it would have to be over a hundred and fifty traffic trips for it to, to.
That's a, that's where a traffic movement permit.
Yes.
And that's in the P G A.
Yeah.
So we definitely wouldn't be anywhere close to that.
Correct. I've had a lot of education and.
Right, exactly. Uh, but you know, it may be, you may want to at least inquire with. The Scarborough office.
Yeah, I can talk to Randy about it.
Yeah. I know I've run into that before, I've been surprised. Normally it's on the road where you don't.
I bet, yeah, it's something.
There's a DOT approach.
Yeah, I, to be honest with you, I didn't think of that because I, I didn't think that was a state road till you just mentioned it. I didn't think about it.
Yeah. Well, you take like a log pattern, you know. Unless you're really familiar with, you don't know what it's, it's a state road, you know, so uh. But that may be worth finding out.
That is definitely something we can get you answers for the second meeting.
Uh, and that, you know, having. The rest of the board may not agree with me, but a lot of times with those situations. Like with stormwater management, if we know the DEP is doing a review. A lot of times will, will somewhat defer to their expertise on that. So it's, again, so it's not a. May not be even across the board. Uh, opinion. But I know it, it potentially could carry some weight.
Okay, so we'll reach out to uh DOT and just uh, get some clarification on that. I'll make sure I include uh an email response from Randy for board to be able to.
And you, you're probably gonna want to reach out to the fire chief as well.
I did.
Has he, will he give you something in writing?
He already did. It should be the packet. They said it was in the email, the fire chief and public work, but I didn't have any issue. Is it in the packet that you guys have?
Yeah, well.
Yeah, I went through it this afternoon, but I didn't remember seeing there.
Andrew Stevenson. He sent us a letter on seven twenty-three and I was forwarded to them the same day and then forwarded to Anne and to uh, and I know uh. I'm sorry, I'm drawing a blank on the woman's name. She's out, well, she had a car accident. It was the.
Oh, Sam.
Sam had a copy of it sent to her as well.
So will you just make, because Sam is out? Will you make a copy and make sure Anne has it?
I will forward it to her right now.
Okay, that'd be super.
Yeah, I showed that Anne got it on the twenty-third and.
Okay.
I believe in their comments uh that they sent me yesterday, I think it said that in there somewhere uh that the fire chief had sent a letter. Because I did send a response to the question that the, the new planner Charles had. Yeah, I noticed the fire chief didn't in that comment that they mentioned that, but they didn't mention Public Works had also reached out.
Uh, five point seven, the applicant has provided a letter from the fire chief. Noting that the Arundel Fire Rescue Department has no additional needs at this time based on the plans.
It's not in, it's not in our.
But there's, right, the letter's not there, but it's referenced in five point seven on page two.
Right, the performance standards.
Yeah.
Do they also in your packet, because I, I don't see your packet, did they give the responses that I sent back yesterday after they sent their questions and comments? Perfect, yeah, yeah, that's it.
They're not changing anything outside of all, not the lighting or anything.
Nothing's changed. Uh, there was no, I put comment in there too. The lighting they asked for, there's no brand. I couldn't find a brand on there, but the washing bulbs I put on it, so. But if you look at the front of the building, uh, both the front lights actually turn towards the building and they have very minimal spillage, probably about five feet. The back one's just a standard floodlight and it's uh fifteen feet of spillage, a couple of sixty watt bulbs. So it's typical of what you see on a home, really. No, I used to, when I had, we used to own car dealerships and we used to upset the airport with our Portland dealership quite a bit. They tried to land some planes in our Chevy store. I know the lighting situation's all too well.
So um, school is in session Monday through Fri- Friday, around eight to five and not on the weekends.
Correct.
Okay.
It follows all federal holidays.
You're going to. Are you going to be putting up any signs? For the public to be able to see where you're located?
Right now, it's undecided. Um, we will work with codes. We don't plan on putting any pylon signs up. Uh, there was a sign on the building. Uh, if anything, we're gonna do like a five by three. Uh, we're not looking for people just to pull in and say they gotta come here, so it's more just for people to be able to see. That's where we are, so we'll put a lighted sign or anything like that. Uh, we'll work within the ordinance and codes once they decide uh what they wanna do, but most likely it will be like a vinyl. Uh, five by three. Vinyl sign that will go on the building, where the champagne one used to be, the champagne propane tank that was there signed before, that was removed. From that plant or out front, so there's no sign there.
Yeah, that would have been one of the, what are we gonna do with the propane tank in the front yard?
Yeah, we, I thought of it one day and I went, called the owner and said.
I assume it's empty.
I hope it was. I hope it was.
I can never tell this is Maine.
Yeah.
True that. Um. Well, currently, I, I think the building's empty, but prior to that, there was almost no one in the parking lot ever. And people come roaring.
I, I can explain that a little bit to you why it wasn't, is it, it originally was owned by Champagne Energy. The family owned it and they sold the business to uh Superior Energy, which is a big Canadian conglomerate. And they bought it more for the L and G storage they had in different, like Gorham and they had the one in Bitterford. Um, the family would not sell the business unless they took all the operations. They leased back some of the properties, their lease just expired. They weren't utilizing the building because most of their operation was being run out of New Hampshire and Connecticut.
Also, that explains why there was no one ever in the park.
There was one or two people there at a max the last couple of years, so it was. Just because they had to obligate the lease as part of the overall purchase of the company is why they had that facility, but now it's uh not needed, so.
You know that people come roaring off of Route One onto Old Post Road.
Yes.
Um. You know, as they try to cut through.
And that's uh. That way in a lot of sites, I get that quite a bit. When we did Starbucks in uh Bitterford. We had to stop the McDonald's traffic from cutting through for a long time. That was just a quick exit people were using and we had to put up Jersey berries, everything during construction because during construction. People still used it, but once people are there and operating, it becomes part of their habit to not do those type of things, but it, it takes some learning. It takes a little bit of education. They'll uh still be doing that for a period of time, but it's a.
Yeah, you put up temporary speed, they sell those plastic ones too.
I, I think we're gonna.
Slows them down after their first time.
We're gonna do that to start with.
Yeah.
Um, they call that traffic calming now.
Yeah.
Uh, we're doing that at a facility down in Wells that uh. A road over is a mile road and they cut through Hanaford. We're putting a raised median that's about sixty feet wide and it's just meant to just. Get people to slow down a little bit. Sometimes that's all it takes.
They've got on Route One, like they've got on Route One in Saco, in the Thornton Academy.
Yeah.
They've got one in each direction.
That's a, that's a temporary thing right now, but that's a study, they're gonna be putting those in.
They put up signs calling them stump.
Sometimes just putting up that plastic.
Straight hops.
That red plastic thing of the kid, like this. Yeah, that does a lot. So we're, we're gonna be doing that as a facility anyways, probably putting up some things that kinda direct people and. But it's gonna be more temporary stuff. Once people.
So we've got a, a couple of more steps to go through. We'll have to do a sidewalk.
Okay.
We'll have to do, we'll have to have a public hearing, we'll have to deem the application complete.
We should deem it complete before we.
Before we go through the.
Go through.
Before we go through the public hearing.
Yeah. Right.
That's the order.
I'm gonna work on the DOT. In the meantime, hopefully I'll get something uh. It's uh vacation time, so obviously it's a little bit longer, but hopefully by next week I'll have something from Randy. I'm doing another project with him so I can get him on the phone pretty easy for that.
How soon do you think, well, we have the complete application, don't we?
Yeah, the application is complete. Uh, we're really hoping to get the minimal. Visits here. We thought we had a pretty easy sidewalk uh. So we're hoping for two, three meetings.
When would you find folks like to do the sidewalk?
First, we should. Deem the application.
No, no, not for the sidewalk. We do the sidewalk, we do the sidewalk first.
True, that's right. And then if there's anything more, we.
Correct.
Yep, there you go.
So we could, we could do the sidewalk. In two weeks or we could do it at some other point, the next meeting?
Do it right before the next meeting.
Right before the next meeting.
And what's the date of the next meeting?
Fourteen, uh, the nineteenth.
Okay, I'm good with that.
So was that a motion by you?
Uh, I moved that we schedule a sidewalk on the nineteenth.
At what time?
To the meeting. So, uh, six o'clock?
Six o'clock. And the second was?
Me.
Okay, okay. Motion by Susan Roth, seconded by Jamie Lowry to have a sidewalk. August nineteenth at six P M.
I give the town planner enough time to notify.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll, I'll let Anne know about it tomorrow and she'll send out the notices. Okay. Any, any, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? It is unanimous.
You guys can make it that night, right?
What's that? I'll make it, I'm local. She, she probably won't, she's out of New York.
That's fine, as long as somebody's there that can answer.
I'll be there for sure. My office is right in Saco, so I'm ready to move in.
Okay, cool.
Just to make clarify, that's the nineteenth, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Two weeks from tonight.
Six P M and then they'll come to the meeting.
And then the meeting will be right out. Uh, do you want? We, we can't schedule a public hearing until we deem it complete, right?
Right.
Right, so that'd be the following meeting, which would be the first one in September.
First week of.
Yeah, so that would make, yeah, the first, the first week. Second Tuesday of September, whatever day that falls on.
Falls right, good and scheduled.
Second, no, first Tuesday, first.
Firemark.
Friday after Labor.
Monday, Tuesday after Labor Day.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Right.
All works for us. We appreciate you guys' time and any questions and uh. If there's anything that uh we can elaborate more on, please let us know at any point.
My only question is how could Starbucks have ever thought that that would be a place to put us?
Which one?
The benefit one.
You know something, I struggled with that. I said the same thing. We had land down the street from it that I was pushing, but they have it down to a science, what side of the street they wanna be on, the morning side of the.
Oh, yeah.
It's, there's a lot to it. I, I tried to argue it. From a local person's standpoint going, I drive this every day, I know how this works, but they were. Held bent on that spot. They wanted that spot and nothing else at that point, so.
And they got it.
They do have a, a history of getting what they want and uh. And uh definitely have a problem with. He's been through this.
He's just grown for years to go back around by the lights.
Trust me, as a developer of it, I had a lot of friends sending me messages complaining about. The parking situation there, but I said I, it's out of my control. It was a lot of. We had a lot of uh opinions. Uh, we had to do a, a contract zone for half the property. It was a lot of moving pieces to that when it wasn't. I had to buy. Two homes and uh, and a property that was owned by a family that owned a grocery store there for. I think years or something, so. It was. I almost gave up on the business then and told somebody I would never do it again, but. And to keep doing it after I say I'm not going to.
I, I looked at it, I watched it go in, I thought, this is insane, and then they started taking out buildings.
B H two M actually did that.
You wanna?
Yeah. Uh. Bill.
Go home.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't. Well, just like me, if I, if I were dropping somebody off at this daycare, I'd be going up the old post road and come back around. Cause there's no way I'd cut across Route One.
Us locals know a lot better than the people coming further away, that's for sure, but.
They'll find out. They'll, they'll see somebody make a right-hand turn out onto Old Post and wonder where that goes.
It's, it's not, we find it's not really traffic the problem, it's the speed of the traffic is the concern always for us.
And it's, it's what? It's the fifty.
I don't know what Route One is there, cause it changes multiple times.
It changes right there at uh the cottages, it goes to fifty and it doesn't drop back down if you cross over the railroad track.
Well, I find that any overpass, people go faster down.
Yeah, but it's.
You're trying to get up, you wanna get enough.
You get to get, get the speed going.
Yeah.
But nobody does the speed limit. That's the problem.
I find.
And Old Post Road, it's thirty-five. And people do sixty.
Yeah.
It's crazy.
You do thirty-five?
No, absolutely.
Down here, Limerick, Limerick is thirty-five.
These modern day vehicles drive so smoothly now, you don't even know you're going sixty sometimes in some of these things. Especially with some of the electric vehicles, you can't hear anything. Exactly, they're really, they're pretty quick, they're pretty quick, yeah. You ever been on an electric golf cart before those things take off when you're pretty young?
Well, thank you very.
Thank you very.
Thank you very much.
We'll look forward to seeing you in two weeks.
We will see you there.
On the nineteen.
And then Paul.
We talked about it.
You, you guys did sign in, right? Please.
What's that?
Did you sign? That way there I can make sure the minutes are accurate.
I've been in all these.
Can be surprised how many people don't.
Team better than most.
They don't, then I go try to make the minutes accurate and it's like. All right, what they, what they say that anyone was.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you. Have a good night. All right, boss. Let me. Start into this.
Did you, yeah, did you, you saw. So you got the end, right?
Yes.
So what these are is, then I gave you copies of these earlier, but I tried to highlight them here to make it a little clearer. It was my attempt at. The discussion we had about industrial parks. Uh, and that email I handed out to you today. Was Anne's comments. On what I gave her, what I gave you guys, okay? So for example, she said on six point six. Which I believe is the, where I tried to define an industrial park.
Yep.
Uh. She. What'd she say? Don't necessarily need to be in a park. Okay, that's true, probably. I think I said an area of any town that is set up for industrial use only. Instead of residential or commercial use, industrial parks may include warehouses, distributions. It's basically, I'll be honest with you, it's a generic definition out of Google. Okay? That's pretty much what I did.
You can define it as one or more industrial. Warehouse buildings or whatever in parentheses.
I am willing to take any comments you guys want me to put in there and then.
I think it's pretty self-explanatory, but.
But I would say, I mean, Paul, I, you know, you don't, just from a. Like grammatical standpoint, it's not. The word park's not used in other places, so I would just. Strike it for consistency.
So take it out of the.
Oh, where do you, I was looking in the definitions.
Yeah, yeah, out of the title.
No, so I think there, that is probably a legitimate place for, as a definition of industrial park.
Okay. Oh, but in here, okay.
Just in the title.
So get, get rid of where I added park and just put business office, park.
Industrial district.
Industrial district.
Yeah.
Be consistent, that's the rest of the language.
Okay, yeah, no, that's good. See, I misread it. I was looking at the definition and it was this paragraph that she was talking about. Okay. Uh, for the definition, which was the next one that I was already on. Um. She recommends we define it as a parcel of land to be utilized. Instead of an area of the town that is set up for. And I'm, I'm fine with that and don't. You guys aren't gonna hurt my feelings, trust me.
So do, do this term industrial park. Used, cause it's not a permitted or conditional use.
No, that was what we were trying to do, was define. Right? The term industrial park and where it could be used. That, that, that was the. Tasking. Cause we, cause then we, further on, we added it in, you know, we added in.
Yep.
The definition, right, and then under thirteen six. Uh, which is the zoning descriptions on where they could use it. It would be in the B one district, right, and we added. Industrial Park District.
Google. Google defines industrial park. As an area of land developed as a site for factories and other industrial business.
Yep.
Do you want me to send that to you?
I, uh, no, I had that. This is what I, I tried to, yeah, you words. I read the words, it's our language, where are we headed in here? I can make it identical to that.
No, I mean, but that's essentially. Yeah, I think you've got it.
So. So maybe I misunderstood. I thought we were trying to define where we would allow an industrial park, so I tried to keep the definition to that thought. Where Anne, I think, is just saying that any parcel of land. Within that district could be termed an industrial park.
But there'd be no, if, if. We define an industrial park and say that it's in the B I district, there's no reason to say that any particular piece of land can be used as an industrial park. Because it's already inside the boundaries of the district.
And I think she might have been thinking like over on one eleven now, right where we.
Yeah, N A R D.
Yeah. Yeah. We've pretty much got almost an industrial park, people buy it, it's. Looks a lot.
He's, he's pretty much what triggered the entire discussion.
That, that doesn't look like what I thought we proved, but anyway. Um. So I think that may be why she was going that route.
I, I, I'm thinking. The way I have read her comment and what's in here is I'm seeing. And in, in the definition, as an industrial park, as a s- specific use for development. Versus something more. An area of town would be, the way I see it, more, I mean, all encompassing from a, like a, a broader. Zoning introduction, no, no, just the context of the language being just a broader introduction.
Yeah.
Or comprehensive plan type of. Description of how it is.
Yep.
Uh, but like if it's an, if it's an industrial park to tie back into a specific use. Then I would say, yeah, it probably could be a, you know, a development or, or. Whatever, set up for industrial use instead of residential or commercial.
So, but I like her insertion of the fact that there are no residences within the industrial park.
Right, well, I think Paul had that.
Right, well, I like that. I think it should stay there.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Well, sometimes there are industrial parks. Where either um, security people or owner. You know, park owners or landlords will live on the premises, for instance, like Heavy Hammer Lane. And that's not an industrial park, but his father was going to live. Above one of the buildings. And have a residence there, even though it was being used for commercial use. So. Um.
Well, commercial, we do allow that. We've got it all along Route One.
We allow, we allow it from a commercial point of view as long as it's uh ancillary to the, to the business itself.
Right. But the idea that, you know, you could have a. You know.
So, so if we changed. The beginning of this, right, industrial park, instead of saying an area of the town, and we just put a parcel of land in town. And leave the rest of it, are you guys happy with it?
I wouldn't limit it to a parcel. Because I would think, I think of an industrial park as almost like a, a commercial subdivision.
Right.
You know, where you've got multiple. Properties.
Right.
Uh. That all have industrial related uses in them. So. I would call it a. Development. Or, um.
Why not just name the, the, the districts that we think it's acceptable to have?
Well, no, this is.
Well, this is, this is the definition of what an industrial park is. We've got it enlisted in the district in the next part.
Okay.
A development or even like a non-residential subdivision, but I don't know if that's getting too. Fervose.
I don't know, cause then you're talking, it could be commercial, it could be.
Right.
Well, I think the word.
I want a uh. Location where multiple units could be built. And just leaving it uh open that way. If need, or I mean, uh.
Well, I like the idea of developed or development. I think that is a is a good term to have. Someplace in the definition. Because it is going to be a development.
Well, here's, he- he- here's what I think I would say. I'd say an area of the town that is set up for industrial use only. Industrial parks may include warehouses, distribution, supply hubs and other factories, but I would take. Instead of residential or commercial use out completely.
So you don't want those excluded?
No, it's an area of town that is set set up for industrial use only. And then you you're giving the illustration of uh may include warehouses, distribution, supply hubs. But I think if we say it's for industrial use only. By definition, that would eliminate.
You got to be careful of that, because the fact is you're gonna industrial use only. You got your marijuana plant. The company of them wasn't better.
Hey, this is. An area of town that is set up for approved. Industrial use only. Right? Because then we go into the business districts and the conditional uses and say what's approved and what's not. Right? Because in there, that also says you can't have any radiological, you can't have any uh chemical, you can't have any of that stuff.
Maybe that would work well. I think that would work well.
And so you do want, instead of residential or commercial use, you want that stricken?
I think it should be stricken. I I'm not sure how anybody else.
So would be, well, I think residential for sure, but what would be your definition of commercial?
Yeah, retail stores.
Okay, so uh because I think it's. So I think um. I think commercial is very broad and you could have fulfillment centers. That, you know, package and do a whole bunch of things that are commercial in the sense, but they're not retail.
Distribution supply hub.
Paul has Paul has defined that with distribution supply hubs.
So retail, I think, commercial, retail, commercial space.
Okay, so what words am I taking out?
Yeah, you don't have to take anything out for me. I mean, I'm just saying, I think commercial as a blanket term. Could run into issues.
A lot of people think of industrial as manufacturing oriented instead of. You know, non retail, commercial, which I I think as it's in here, warehouses, distribution. It's sort of that heavy commercial, non retail that that would be compatible.
So then say non retail and commercial. So that is accepted or.
But I think anybody that's looking to.
Eliminating commercial altogether.
No, I think anyone who's looking to come in and develop some kind of an industrial zone like that. Wouldn't even be looking at the commercial retail aspect of it. They just, they they know what it is that they want to do.
Yeah, but I wouldn't assume, uh you know, you could get somebody, an outlier. Who wants to put some kind of a retail commercial. Maybe a a box and you know, a place that sells shipping boxes and tape and all kinds of things.
So if we. Effectively web approached us. Would we allow that under this definition?
Is he a dest- is he a distribution?
Big giant warehouse.
Right, that's why eliminating the word commercial is problematic, I think.
Well, yeah, but they're retail too.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
They do both wholesale and retail. But to to Paul's point, if we were to craft the language to say non retail, it would preclude. An FW web that might be very. It's not, it's not the big box cold bar retail that we're thinking of. Somebody could take a strict approach and say, no, you can't have any counter sales in this facility.
So in other words, you couldn't have a FedEx or a UPS there because you can go in and buy shipping supplies there. So do we want to eliminate them? And that's why I didn't, I think we have to be careful with the word commercial.
Yes, sweetie.
Well, you could put something in without.
This is the fun of the DB one and two uh era. When we would sit here for hours and.
How about hybrid? A hybrid commercial slash.
Okay, then I gotta go find a definition.
But I think if an FW web came and wanted to set its. Facility up there, we wouldn't want to eliminate them as a possible.
It would be crazy to. Why not just say that if if you have a a, what do you call it, a distribution supply hub? You could have a distribution supply hub with limited retail.
Well, if you go back to the FW web, their limited retail is a giant showroom with just about everything they have.
It looks like P and E Supply, some of the other places around, yeah.
Only I think they're bigger, you know. And they just come to mind because I was just there, that's why.
Yeah, like a Ferguson's or whatever. I think you should leave commercial in without trying to find a definite a definition.
Okay, so an area of the town that is set up for for industrial and commercial use.
Or approved industrial. And commercial.
Yes, I think that works.
Yeah, that would work.
Because you could get a hybrid business.
Don't worry, don't define non retail, don't.
In a permitted use. We have retail. It's just not, wouldn't be within an industrial park.
Yeah, because the the park itself is conditioned.
Okay. I'll clean that up. And then the last part I had in there was uh. Page one eighty nine, thirteen point six. And basically, we just, I I just added to the B one district like we had discussed, added park to industrial.
So take that off.
We're gonna take that out, okay?
Get in the titles.
Okay. And then I did had that last statement that said industrial parks may only be constructed in this district. I got in thirteen point six there.
Do we, do we want to restrict it just to the BI district?
Okay, so what Ann is recommending. Is we could eliminate that last sentence that I added, industrial parks may only be constructed in this district. Uh it's, these are specifically the descriptions of the actual district areas of the town, so you could eliminate that last section completely. Because if you only list the conditional use in section six point six. For B one and not in the other districts, uh then you already have clarified whether allowed in town.
I'd agree with that. Because when you look at the rest of these descriptions, then they're more generic of what. Where they are, not what's allowed and.
I'm up down the gateway. Because you got a couple properties in there that could be.
Unless we were to add it as an allow or or permitted or conditional use in the gateway, then it wouldn't be allowed. So so we need to, we need to get into the gateway. But no, I can see where Dan's talking about.
No, that's, and that's fine. I'm okay with that. That means I don't have to touch that area because we're taking out everything we've added. Which I'm fine with. Yeah, I'm fine with that, you know? This was only to start discussion, that's all it was.
Because on the gateway, you can also have a train track.
So do you also want me to add something to the gateway section?
I'm not, I'm not sure about the gateway district, but I do think it should be in uh the ARD, the the Route one eleven corridor.
ARD and I'll look at gateway and. If it, like in.
I'm trying to remember why we created the gateway, because we broke, it was part of the BI and we broke it off.
That was before my time.
Me too, yeah. I think Marty and I were the only ones that were here.
When when we did the Alfred Road, I was thinking that was, there was a. There was an area right up at the end of New Road. Did we change that to now run the whole way or is that still, is it like a separate district? Close to the end of New Road, towards the line versus what is more in the westerly part of. Route one eleven where it uh, you know, you get larger parcels and opens up to be, you know.
You got it down down in there.
Yeah, there's, I'm trying to think.
Did something with the triangle where Alfred Road and New Road come together, do you remember? There was, I, it was one of my first things. Do you know where I'm talking about? I know. And we changed, that was my tab was here, we changed the designation, definition or the designation. Of that particular parcel.
Well, we 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 cut off some of the land on.
From the corridor down to just a little bit beyond the road.
Yeah, see, I think because we wanted the uh, the guy that the that has the automo- automotive uh thing. That he got complained about the first night he put it in there, the race car guy.
Route one eleven? Oh, I remember him.
He he got complaints from the neighbors shortly after he opened up because he was out there racing his engines.
It's a high performance auto. A couple lines. I would be, I mean, in that little portion of town, I don't know if I would support an industrial park.
I doubt if I would support one, maybe, maybe from uh. Heavy Hammer Lane, just this side of Heavy Hammer, going the other way.
Or towards Sanford.
Uh well, from, you you could go from New Road on, but you've got a couple of businesses there.
To anything west of New.
Anything west of New Road.
So it's this way.
I mean, that agway, for instance, if that, I don't think that agway is going to be here forever. For two people, the two elderly people who, I didn't realize.
They refused to bid.
Uh that could easily be. An industrial park. It was pretty big.
Twenty two acres.
Twenty two? So that's not, from an industrial park standpoint, that's not a big piece of land.
So do we have a parcel size?
Probably not for industrial park. I'm just saying.
Do we have a minimum?
It's probably, you know.
Barely.
You're probably going to at least want five to ten acres just to have. A adequate building and maneuvering, aren't even anything else.
So what is that uh on Moran Drive or Moran Road? You know, that you take off of the Bitter Bitterford Connector to cut on to Route one. When there's a lot of traffic on the Bitterford connector. So that's an industrial park.
That's part of the benefit.
So how many acres is that? You think it's, you know, a hundred acres or the whole uh industrial park?
If you look at it, if you look at that industrial park, it's on both sides of Route one. It it goes back out to the.
Well, I'm just talking about the part that you use as a uh, you know, as a shortcut. Not that I do that, but I.
You thought about it.
I've thought about it, going fifty miles.
So, so don't forget though, part of the definition, right? In that, in that B one district, which now includes industrial parks, is to provide an area near transportation arteries. And municipal services that can support a range of non polluting. You don't have that on the other side. You've got it on Route one. You do not have it on Alfred. There's no public water.
But you, but you would have an Alfred Road, prepaid power.
But you don't have any water to cool them motors down once they get wound wound up. Industry without water is damn tough to run. It's awful tough to run. So I think. You got a pretty good description for Route one, until we actually get. Barraged with a whole bunch of people willing to move in and develop an industrial park. I don't think I'd recommend you spread it all all over the place here.
Should should we put a a a minimum lot size? Ten, fifteen acres, twenty five acres. Yeah, because I think, I think i- if we say ten, they're only going to have.
Because you know, when somebody will want to come in with an industrial use, that's, doesn't require.
Well, if it, it then it it wouldn't be an industrial park because that's the, that's the BI zone.
Couple warehouses in nowhere near twenty five acres, right? That's true. Technically, you'd be meeting that requirement or that definition.
So I'm going to be adjourned.